Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting. It's our annual meeting where we recognize our students and some of our community volunteers, and so that's why we're here at the beautiful Berlin High School tonight. And so let's get started because we do have a full agenda. Could you please call this meeting to order, Mrs. Hatfield?
Sure, let me call the roll by asking for Mr. King.
Here.
Mrs. Patrick Abson. Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel.
Yes, here.
And Dr. Weis.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we do have a lot of hiring to do, and so we have an addendum with additional new hires on here, so I need to approve the agenda with the addendum. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
One second.
Lakeisha, seconds.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Dr. Weis.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Fiesel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, for the presentations, we're going to have Dr. Weis read first, and then we'll have Mr. King read second, and I'm going to go down there. As the people come up to the stage, we will get your picture and send it to you. All right, any questions? Let's go.
Are we still going to go?
Yes.
Bring them down there.
You can sit down there.
We're coming. So.
celebrate the students and staff members for their outstanding achievements in academic, co-curricular, extracurricular, and athletic activities. This spring, we had more than 152 students, coaches, and advisors achieve outstanding accomplishments. We will congratulate those individuals that were able to be in attendance this evening. As I announce your name, please walk up to receive your award and then cross to have your photo taken with Board President Julie Wagner Fiesel. Nathan Nykar received the Science Champion Award from USAID and was honored as the Regeneron ISEF 2021 United States Air Force Research Lab for Robotics and Intelligent Machines. Herschel Nitala represented Olentangy Schools in the quarterfinals of the Scripps National Spelling Bee after being named the Ohio Virtual Regional Spelling Bee Champion. Olentangy is home to amazing musicians, vespians, and artists. The Board is pleased to recognize many of them this evening. The following individuals and schools were recognized for their theatrical performances this year at the Kappa Marquee Awards. From Olentangy Berlin High School, Andrew Dahlke. Outstanding student designer, Little Shop of Horus set design. Accepting on behalf of the crew for Little Shop of Horus for outstanding technical achievement is Director Erin Gibbons. From Olentangy Liberty High School, Nick Zarcoas, Best Actor in a Leading Role as Father in Children of Eden. Abigail Hatfield, Best Supporting Actress, Children of Eden. From Olentangy Orange High School, the Set and Properties Crew of Working, Backstage Excellence. Accepting on behalf of the students is Director Kathy Swain Abrams. Another area in which our high schools excel is journalism. Join me in congratulating the following student journalists from Orange High School who received a superior rating at the High School Scholastic Media Association State Journalism Contest. The Board is pleased to honor Teresa Christian. Olentangy Schools has historically supported an extraordinary, strong DECA program in each of its high school buildings. Over the past 20 years, district students have been leaders at the state and national level of this program that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Congratulations to the following DECA students who placed at the state level competition and those that qualified for the International Career and Development Conference. From Berlin High School, Sidney Billy. Tong Yu Kai. Caitlin Reynolds. No. Kayla Reynolds. From Liberty High School, Grace Bond. Go that way. Sarah Sadariaka. From Orange High School, Charles DeBolt. We now turn to recognizing our phenomenal student athletes. Many students have received individual state-level honors in their sport this year. The Board congratulates the following students. From Olentangy High School, Sidney Burrz, state runner-up 300-meter hurdles. Quinn Forgrave, sixth-place seeded 100-meter, 400-meter, and 800-meter track and field. Jaden Tucker, state qualifier in track and field. From Orange High School, Sarah Borton, track and field state championship's fifth-place John Peterson, track and field state championship's third-place pole vault. Our student athletes are led by fantastic coaches and mentors. From Liberty High School, Cole Young, first-team All-State Boys Volleyball. All right, is that all our students? Our student athletes are led by fantastic coaches and mentors. Many have received team and coaching honors this year. Tonight, we honor only a portion of those mentors. From Olentangy High School, Emily Holstclaw, coached the Olentangy Boys Volleyball Team to regional champions and to finish as the state runner-up. Coach Jennifer Sosa and the girls' track and field team are being honored as OCC Champions. On behalf of the entire Board, I would once again like to congratulate the many outstanding students, coaches, and, hold on. Is Rohan still here? Awesome. Well, congratulate all of our students, coaches, and advisors recognized this evening. We are proud of you and your accomplishments.
Excuse me. I think it's great that we do the students and the parents in one night. I think it's always a nice touch. Tonight, the Board will recognize community members who have given their time and talents to enrich our schools. The Olentangy Board of Education established the Community Service Awards in 1986 to honor the community residents who have had a major impact on our children's education through their volunteer efforts or significant monetary or in-kind donations. I'm going to name each of the award winners and read to you some comments provided by those who nominated them. When your name is called, please come forward and join to accept your award and have your photo taken with Julie. And we'd also like you to take a group picture when we're done out in the lobby area, and so we can get all that together. So, first is Mrs. Andrea Connolly, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary. She has been a wonderful supporter of Wyandotte Run, been vice president for two years, followed by two years as co-president. Once again, she will support Wyandotte Run by being vice president for 21-22 school year. In addition to her office positions, she has been active at WRAS events and assisted in purchasing materials to aid teachers in educating students. No matter what they need, she is willing to help. WRAS values her service to staff and students, and we'd like to thank her for all that she Lisa Davidson and Davidson Orthodontics. Dr. Davidson of Davidson Orthodontics has been a big contributor to Wyandotte Run as a WRPTO sponsor and with materials for student needs. If the building needs anything, she steps up to help. She is encouraging, supportive, and very generous in her backing of staff and students. We'd like to thank her and the staff of Davidson Orthodontics for everything they do for WRAS. Accepting on behalf of Dr. Davidson is Administrative Assistant Karen Bykum. Tom Fogarty, nominated by Olentangy Orange High School. Tom has supported the Orange High School band program over the past seven years with his video services. He's provided family members, both near and far, the opportunity to watch their band students perform. At his time serving his grown, so has his skills and digital equipment. In addition to providing quality video of band performances on the field and in the concert hall, he has also initiated and operates the band YouTube page, which has garnered hundreds of thousands of views. We have appreciated Mr. Fogarty's contributions to our band program and to Olentangy Schools. We thank him for his dedication and creativity that has enhanced the Orange High School band Dave Hilger, nominated by Olentangy High School. Dave is serving his third year as the outdoor concession manager for the Olentangy High School music boosters. Prior to that, he served as a concession volunteer for three years. This will be the second year he has served the Braves community without a student in the music program. They went beyond to make sure that all safety protocols were followed during the COVID-19 in order to ensure OHS could provide concessions for athletic events when 90% of area schools did not have concessions at all during the school year. Megan Larkin, nominated by Freedom Trail Elementary. Megan is a very active member in the Olentangy community. She is an integral member of the Freedom Trail Elementary School PTO. Megan goes above and beyond when it comes to what is best for Olentangie family. She is one of the hardest-working people the principal sergeant has ever met. She truly does what is best for kids and our Olentangie students. Danielle Pietrowitz. Danielle has been an amazing volunteer at Freedom Trail Elementary. She pours her heart and soul into the school. She is always helping someone to make FTES a better place. Danielle attends PTO meetings on a regular basis and coordinates our volunteers at all school events. FTES is grateful for all that she's done over the years. Thank you, everybody.
We appreciate everybody coming tonight, but we understand if some of you have to leave now and don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we'll all just take a minute and you can exit. Thanks for coming and congratulations. Okay, as you'll notice, we're short a board member and a superintendent tonight because they have other things came up. Life happened, but we do have Todd Meyer with us tonight, our chief operations officer, and he is going to be giving our strategic planning update.
Mrs. Lewis, thank you for that warm welcome. Okay, good evening. First and foremost, would like to thank the board for their recognition tonight. Anytime we can honor and recognize the talent that we have within our schools with students, adults, and then adding in the community members, obviously, it's a great night and celebration, so thank you for doing that. Strategic Plan Overview. So, as you remember, the last two board meetings, we started updating the board and the community on our strategic plan. So, as a reminder, we have a strategic plan to clearly outline the district's strategic priorities to the entire organization and all stakeholders while supporting our mission, vision, and values as the Olentangie School District. The strategic plan has helped us over the past four years in shaping and directing the work of the departments and administrators within the district, keeping focus on our priorities. This is the third of four presentations about the strategic plan. We've reviewed the bottom two, the last two board meetings, learning and organizational development and internal processes, and tonight, we will move to the top. Our four strategic priorities contain 12 goals. And our framework more than a formula. The priorities and district values tie together. They are students and stakeholders, who we care about; resource stewardship, who we have or what we have; internal processes, how we do things; learning and organizational development, how we get better. Tonight, we are focusing in on the strategic priority of students and stakeholders, and then we're going to cover the three goals: alleviate barriers to learning, promote a culture of inclusive excellence, and expand community engagement and relationships. Tonight, we hit on the strategic priority that is all about students, and it's kind of fitting because we just recognized so many students across the district tonight. Facilitating maximum learning and providing a welcoming and caring environment for every student that walks through our doors. We cannot achieve our mission without two of these three goals: alleviating barriers to learning and promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. This is so important to what we do. Each child that walks through our doors is unique, and we need to ensure that they all are welcomed and cared for in order to set them up for a successful learning environment. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jack Fetty to share our work in these areas of alleviating barriers to learning and promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. First to echo what Mr. Meyer said, yeah, this evening is perfect for these topics because, as we just saw, our students are at the core of everything we do, and our mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student is very important to us. And starting with alleviating barriers to learning, that's very essential to fulfilling our mission. If students have barriers to learning, mental health barriers, that can prevent them from facilitating maximum learning. So, we take this very seriously. So, as we've, the format we've been following, what we've been doing and where we're headed. So, one of the big things we did this year to help alleviate barriers to learning was establish the Olentangie Parent Academy. If you attended Coach Ryan Day's online meeting a couple of weeks ago, that was a part of our parent academy. The goal there is to connect parents with resources to help them support their students at home, and we're very excited to have kicked off that process, that series with such a wonderful speaker, and we look forward to offering more. The other big part of providing, or alleviating barriers to learning, excuse me, is a tiered prevention program. So, we start with prevention, which is for all students, and educating them appropriately. Then intervention, if a student has a specific difficulty, we have school social workers, school counselors, school psychologists who are available. And then we have intensive intervention, which, as you're aware, we have our mental health specialists from the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center. And all of these efforts are really geared towards three areas: alleviating mental health concerns, alleviating drug and alcohol issues, and eliminating bullying. Those three issues are systemic issues in schools everywhere, and our barriers to learning process is designed to help students in each of those areas to, again, allow them to have the best experience possible in our schools. Where we're headed next, we're expanding our Tier One programs for students. There's a lot of activity around Delaware County and central Ohio in general to increase student groups that are specific to different subsets of the population. So, for example, our ruling our experiences group at the elementary school is going to be directed at girls' experiences in elementary school. That's a local Columbus nonprofit that supports that work. Thank Goodness I'm Female, TGIF is a middle school program run by the Delaware Helpline, and Active Minds is a high school group that promotes mental health awareness and issues amongst students so that they can help one another. The Active Minds program is all about the fact that 2/3 of students with mental health issues talk to a friend first. So, we want their friends to be able to advocate for the needs of each student, of their friends. We'll also be continuing to increase our interventions using our social workers and our school psychologists to make sure that they have all the resources available to them to support students. Dr. Behrens has presented to the board recently, and you understand the growing needs in that area. And then, as I mentioned before, we're going to be continuing our parent academy opportunities because we want to support parents as they support their students' well-being, and we'll be offering both in-person and virtual events in the coming school year. The next area is promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. Again, we want students to be able to thrive and flourish in our schools. We want them to have a sense of belonging more than anything. So, what we've been doing so far is focusing on three areas of engagement: student engagement, staff engagement, and community engagement. We have a Student Leadership Advisory Council. We have our Global Scholars Program, which has been very popular, and we have diversity clubs in each of our schools, which are student-run clubs that typically meet after school. We have been increasing our staff engagement activities specifically with our Heritage Month documents to promote different Heritage Months in the classroom, to make resources available to our teachers, doing book studies, and of course, the One Community Conference, which engages students, teachers, administrators, and parents. Speaking of community engagement, our Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and our Service Plunge were both great hits this year. Our community really stepped up to show their concern for the well-being of the community and really participated well in those events, so we're going to certainly continue those efforts. Again, it's really important that all students feel a sense of belonging, that they feel seen and supported by their peers, by their teachers, and that they're comfortable and happy and have a sense of belonging at school in order to put their best foot forward and prepare them best for their future. As we continue into this coming school year, a sense of student belonging will continue to be paramount for us. One of the specific things we'll be doing is working with English Language Arts teachers on their curriculum, and we'll be continuing with the One Community Conference, which used to be a one-day event. This year, we moved it to virtual, so we're working through the best means of offering that opportunity for all of our community members. Most importantly, though, both of these areas address the portrait of a learner, which you're also familiar with, that we want all of our students to be purposeful, resilient, curious, and kind, and that is at the heart of what we do in these areas for our students and stakeholders. Ms. Krista Davis will be presenting the next area for you.
All right. So, our third goal in tonight's Students and Stakeholders portion of the strategic plan is to expand community engagement and relationships. And so, in this area, some of the things that we have been doing is to reinstitute the Key Communicators Group, which currently is about 200 community members in the district. The goal of this group is to share information about the district so that they, those leaders in the community, can then share that information in their networks so that we can get the word out instead of an email over and over and over again, but be able to share information through that group. That has been restarted during the past year when we were in a virtual setup, and so that will move forward in a in-person format, starting this upcoming year. We began a district-wide alumni association in partnership with the Olentangie Education Foundation, and this is where we're connecting with our alumni in the district four times a year with a newsletter about what is happening in the district and then also featuring our amazing alumni. As you saw the students tonight, you can imagine what they're like as alumni out and about in the world, and so it's been really fun to feature them and share their stories with each other. And we'll be continuing to expand those efforts with the Olentangie Education Foundation. As you know, the Board of Education has several committees: a facilities committee chaired by Sharon Jurowitz, a finance and audit committee chaired by Tracy McDowell, policy committee chaired by Dr. Fetty, and a school advocacy committee chaired by Holly Hanson. In all of those committees, we have over 50 community members volunteering across each of those committees. And then we have superintendent committees. The Business Advisory Council has about 54 members, and we meet quarterly. The attendance boundary committee meets as needed, which we just needed to do that for the opening of Shale Meadows, and we'll be working again on attendance boundaries as we look towards opening Middle School Six. That committee ranges from about a dozen to two dozen members, depending on the project. And then we have a continuous improvement committee that meets regularly to look at various aspects in the district that perhaps could be improved and then make recommendations, and then a cost efficiency committee. So, these committees also have about 50 to 75 members at any one point in time of the community that are serving in those standing committees. And of course, as you know, we add committees as needed. So, where we're headed, we are continuing our ongoing efforts in student, staff, and community engagement, including the district diversity committee, and Dr. Fetty covered some of those things in his conversation about inclusive excellence. We are going to reinstitute coffee chats. The coffee chats typically happen during a lovey cycle, and so Mrs. Hatfield and Mr. Rafe will be doing coffee chats during the upcoming year for community members to meet and have discussions about various aspects of the district. Two years ago, we ran a series of town halls where we held meetings in the different township halls around the district and did a format where people could ask questions, and we presented information about, or Mr. Rafe and Mrs. Hatfield presented information about what was happening in the district at that time. We'll continue to have leadership attend our PTO and booster meetings to engage with those community members, and we're also going to work on connecting with the older adults in our community. I think we've all noticed where we live is our empty nesters and older adults aren't moving away from the community, they're staying here, and so we want to connect with them and engage them with our students and in our schools. We are continuing to improve website engagement and also adding additional mobile resources with a mobile app. And then, finally, we will be continuing and even furthermore posting financial reports to the district website as well as other reports that pertain to the business of the district. So, with that, that is the conclusion of tonight's strategic plan, three goals that we're covering.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the Board President's Report. Well, we have a new school funding formula, and on my way here tonight, somebody had sent me a podcast that the Columbus Dispatch did, and they said, "Juliet Olentangie must be doing cartwheels because there's a new school funding formula." I had to laugh because they know me, and they know that I'm always talking about school funding because, yes, we do have a fair, the Fair School Funding Formula, but it's good, but hopefully, it will get better as time will tell, and I'm going to cover part of it, and then Mrs. Hatfield's going to cover part of it in her report. So, the Fair School Funding Formula, which we have been talking about for years, is the Cup Patterson Formula, got inserted into the state budget during the conference committee. So, that meant there was no debate on it. They took the House's plan and plopped it right into the budget, but that's the good news because it truly looks at the average cost that it takes to educate one student, and they have determined that cost to be $7,200. That's for a minimum education. That's not any AP classes, that's not any extracurriculars, that's not any honors classes, you know, that's the basics, $7,200. And then they'll take that number and work with it to develop how much money each district is going to get. Now, that $7,200 used to be $6,020, so that it is an increase, so that's great. So, the formula takes that $7,200 and determines how much a local community can afford to pay toward that cost, and the difference between the two becomes what the state provides the community in the way of school funding. The most recent estimate is that Olentangie will receive over $700 per pupil from the state. I said $700 per pupil from the state. That's more than what we are getting this year, which is about $580, but it's still not what the average school district is getting, which is about $4,000. Now, this is just an estimate that we have been given. Mrs. Hatfield and I keep crunching numbers, but it's just an estimate. The true number is not yet known because they have to update our enrollment numbers, and enrollment numbers in the state don't get updated until October. And then they also have to factor in new property valuations, and so the real amount will be figured out later this fall. So, while our fiscal year started, we think we're getting $700 more, $700 per pupil, but we won't know for sure until October. Yeah, so figure that out, finance people. Yeah, so figure that out, finance people. So while the state funding is more than what we are currently receiving from the state, it's not a windfall of money. I also want to state that this new funding formula is only funded for two years, so the work continues on our end. As we have shown at past school board meetings, the 2020 levy will last three years as promised. That's no debate there. And as of this spring, the five-year forecast update showed that we'll make it at least four years. So now it's that it's our charge, this board, to make sure that it can last five years. I want everyone to be aware that this board is constantly asking our administrators what the impact of every financial decision is on our district's bottom line. A lot of times, you'll hear us saying, "What does that do to our days cash on hand?" Because that's what we're looking at when Mrs. Hatfield provides us with the five-year forecast. Our eyes go right to the bottom line, which is the days cash on hand, because that's what we, I mean, for us, for a growing school district, we really have to watch the days cash on hand. We look at these figures with a fine-tooth comb, and we utilize the experience of our Finance and Audit Committee. Now, also included in the new state budget is a new state report card. So gone is the A through F grading system that all school districts were graded on. It has been replaced by a five-star system. There are also changes on how the six components that make up the state report card are calculated. So some of these changes will show up on the next state report card, but others will be phased in. So when the next state report card is released, we won't be able to do a true apples-to-apples comparison because they're changing how things are calculated, and it won't be A through F, it'll be stars. So we expect Jeanette to work some magic for us when she starts explaining that. Finally, the district's attention now turns to the first day of school, which is August the 19th. This agenda has a lot of human resource actions on it that we must take in order to prepare for the 2021-2022 school year as required by law. The next school board meeting will be Thursday, August the 12th, and we will be back in the admin building, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming and appreciate your attention. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report by Mr. Meyer.
Okay, thank you. I know for sure Mr. Rafe's disappointed he can't be here tonight, especially tonight because, again, we got to honor and recognize so many wonderful students, staff, and community members. But consistent with what Mr. Rafe does at all board meetings, he does recognize individuals or groups across the district that, of course, are still doing things over the summer. So here is a picture of the Orange High School marching pioneers and the Berlin High School's Pride of the Bears marching band. Orange High School participated in the Sunbury Independence Day Parade, and then Berlin was in the Delaware Parade on July 4th. So it's really good to see things are getting back to normal. Last year, we weren't able to do this, so, and I know firsthand, because I was the principal of Orange High School, how much pride there is in the Orange marching band and, of course, in the Berlin marching band, but they put on a good show when they're out there in the public, so they really represent their schools in our district very, very well. Here, we want to highlight three students from Orange High School. It's hard for me to see up there, but Tate Siddhartha and Jay Shook, who all, based on an essay and interview process, were selected for the Buckeye Boys State. The advisor at Orange said typically they get one student a year. This year, they got three students from Orange High School to represent Orange High School at the Buckeye Boys State. And the Buckeye Boys State program, it's an eight-day experience, learning about the operation of government, political parties, and the relationship of one to the other in shaping Ohio government. And again, as you can see up there, that was held at Miami University this year. And exciting news, I don't know which way you came to Berlin, but if you came up by it there, you can see the machines, tractors on the ground moving dirt for Middle School 6. So that's what it looks like now, and it won't be long where we're constructing, putting the foundation in and putting the steel up. And then to the right there, Shale Meadows is on target, putting the finishing touches on Shale Meadows as we speak. Looks like the teachers will get in there the end of the month, start putting their classrooms together, and the grand opening is set for Sunday, August 15th, I believe, at 1:00 p.m.
Oh, good.
Some action items of note on tonight's agenda, except with regret, the following administrative resignation. So Wayne Sai, Assistant Principal at Olentangie High School, will be moving on to Dublin. Obviously, we're sorry to see him leave. He was a valued member of our administrative team, and he's done really good work at Olentangie High School. You can see we are approving, recommending the approval of four new administrators, and if any of you are here, because I didn't see because we're in the auditorium, so if any of you are here, stand up and don't be shy. Nicole Evans, Lisa Wuscinich, Christopher Fuller, and Amara Sidnor. Any of you guys here? Nope, not tonight. So Nicole will be the new Assistant Principal at Arrowhead, Lisa Supervisor in Pupil Services, Christopher Fuller will be the new Assistant Principal at Olentangie High School. He was currently a French teacher here at Berlin, and he'll be moving over to Olentangie High School. And then Amara will join our social worker team. And then finally, there's a recommendation to approve a three-year license agreement with Learning.com for Easy Tech Inquiry. This is a digital citizenship platform that is required for us to get our E-rate funds And just a couple important dates. Next Board of Education meeting, as Mrs. Feesal mentioned, August 12th at 6:30 back at the administrative offices. And then, again, the grand opening, which will be an exciting day, so we're praying for good weather. Shale Meadows Elementary School, August 15th at 1:00 p.m.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
All right. Thanks for that date on Shale Meadows I was going to ask. Emily, Treasures Report.
Sorry, just a moment.
Yep. I know we have to do some dancing up here.
Well, hopefully it's just dancing and not falling.
Thank you for your patience as I transition over. Tonight, I would like to talk to the audience primarily about the Fair School Funding and give the Board an update on some of the more specific items, as Mrs. Feesal has talked about the journey it has taken for us to get here and have the Fair School Funding Plan enacted in the biennium budget. So of course, the Fair School Funding Plan is included in the latest biennium budget. Funding of this plan is not guaranteed beyond this biennium, so fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Simulations do indicate that we will receive an additional $3.5 million each of the two years of the budget, and the next steps include the Ohio Department of Education and having them tasked with the development of the new funding reports. Those funding reports are a key piece of information as we digest what that funding is, not only in total dollar amount, but also the component pieces of that. We have some more information on that in the next slide. The new funding reports will demonstrate the changes in the funding model that were created with base funding, direct funding of students where they are enrolled, and the application of current statistics. Between July and September, the reports will incur progressive updates to include components of the Fair School Funding Plan. And then, as Mrs. Feesal stated, October, hopefully not in November, but October, the reports will be finalized and we'll actually be receiving the new funding in completion. So the results of the state funding model will be updated in the fall forecast. We just don't have enough actual information to date to do an interim forecast. So what we have on the screen is an example of the new funding report and what it might look like. The funding reports are available on the Ohio Department of Education's website. You can put in traditional funding reports, and it will pull up the reports that are available. What we have on the screen is a demonstration of where we are today with the current June Number Two report format and what we're expecting to come throughout the months of July and the summer with the new format. So what does this mean? The biggest change, or the significant change you'll see is in Line A. This is where we will note that we have the base funding of the new formula. It does look lower, just looking at that one particular line, but you'll also notice that the community school transfer, STEM transfer, and scholarship transfers on Lines J, K, and L are no longer there. Those are traditionally posted as deductions to our funding and are reflected in our purchased services costs in the five-year forecast. That will be netted in Line A. We are also getting about $400,000 or just over from the budget restoration. These were cuts that were implemented in 2019. The state gave a portion of it back in '20, a little bit more in 2021, and then the final allocation back in 2022. Student success and wellness funds are also posted right now. Those are currently not in the general fund allocations and therefore not part of what we post in our five-year forecast. The question that is in front of the Ohio Department of Education right now is where will we post that moving forward? That component is still a part of the Fair School Funding Plan, but there's uncertainty if we will keep that in a separate fund as we do now, or if it will be completely posted to the general fund. If that's the case, we will see the revenue and those expenditures come into the five-year forecast moving forward, so we'll keep an eye on that and present updates as available. We will have enrollment growth. That component part will keep going, and then, of course, as you can see, we still have separate funding for preschool, special education, transportation, and there will be additional components of the Fair School Funding Plan coming forward as these reports are updated. Changes in the statistical data. Mrs. Feesal talked about a number of these, but these are the three main categories that will impact what we saw as a $3.5 million estimated increase versus what will actually be posted and funded to us in October. Student enrollment, of course, is a key component of this. Scholarship students that are living within our district but educated at another facility will not be counted as our ADM or Average Daily Membership or Enrollment. Their enrollment is labeled as ADM on the Ohio Department of Education reports, means similar things, but just know that they label it different, so it's hard to kind of, I wanted to make sure I connected that for you. Our current enrollment projections support a 2,000-plus student gain of students through fiscal year 2025, so we do anticipate that our gain and our increasing enrollment will help us see more state dollars. Property valuations, as well as local income, as Mrs. Feesal spoke about, will be the other important factor that gives us a variance in estimates versus actual. Prior to the Fair School Funding Plan, we had a state share index. And if any of you can read the ODE report and break it down line by line for me, I would be happy to have a conversation with you. It's very complicated, and quite honestly, it uses very old and outdated statistics to determine what the local share should be. So the Fair School Funding Plan has identified and labeled what those statistic information, the pieces of information that we need and how it will be used. As you can see, property valuations will take the lower of 2018-2020 average or the average of calendar year 2020, and then with income, it'll take the lower of the three-year average of 2017 to '19 or 2019's average. So typically, you'll see a year to a two-year lag in data when it comes to valuations and income, but what the state is using now is probably five to six years, if not older, than the current information available, so we're happy that those will be updated. As you may remember from the five-year forecast, property valuations in the community have been on the rise. In our 2017 reappraisal, we saw an 11.4% increase community-wide and a 12% increase community-wide in the 2020 reappraisal. So as those valuations go up, it will affect the calculation for the community wealth overall and the amount of state funding that we receive. So those pieces are important to watch. The distribution weights between property valuations and income valuations will be 60% and 40%, respectively. So it's good that it's not strictly based on property valuations alone. That's a good change for us as a community because our property valuations are very significant. With that, I will take questions on the state funding. All right. Okay. Just one more item of note. We do have one action item this evening. We have an appropriation adjustments. Those adjustments are brought forward to the Board on a regular basis, just to make sure that we are keeping our monthly budgets in compliance and up to date. If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let you get back to your seat. We're going to do public participation right at the podium, so when your name is called, come up and state your name and address for the record, and then she will start the time when you start talking because we know that it's going to take longer. Oh, do you have, do you have? Oh, okay. So apparently, they've worked things out, so people number one through eight, report over, Heather's standing over there in the white top, so if you want to go over there, and we'll get you in order, and then you can come up and speak. Thanks.
As our community members join us for public participation, I would like to read aloud the information or the procedures that surround public participation. Public participation is the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion. It is an opportunity to present any ideas or concerns to the Board in a public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to the comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of 30 minutes. We will probably adjust that a little bit just because of the different circumstances of folks moving through the room, but it's generally 30 minutes maximum. Each participant has a limit of five minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants are asked to state their full name and address when stepping to the podium. Public participation procedures are established by the Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The policy in its entirety is available on the district website. With that, I will call our first participant. We have Ryan, I believe it's Rugieri. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hi, Ryan.
Forgive me for mispronouncing that. If you would state your name loudly for the community, and then you have five minutes.
My name is Ryan Rugieri. Good evening, members of the Olentangie School Board, Administrators, and Superintendent Rafe. I am a bit nervous, so I have prepared my statement so that I can read it without forgetting or having my voice shake intensely. My name is Ryan Rugieri, and I'm standing here tonight as one of our district's 3.9% Latino minority students. As a sophomore at Orange High School and our STEM Academy, and as a Guatemalan-American, I think it's important for you to hear from a student who is directly impacted by what happens in our classrooms. I have to tell you that I have strict parents. They have taught me to follow God's commandments, work hard, be kind to everyone, and do my best at everything I do. That doesn't always happen. I am a teenager, and I do get into trouble sometimes. During hybrid learning, I pretty much fell apart. I missed assignments, had to work hard to get caught up, and fought depression. However, I rebounded, and so far, I have a 4.0 average and represent- However, I rebounded, and so far, I have a 4.0 average and represent Orange High School on our golf team. The competition is fierce, and I know that I'm going to have to give it my all if I want to compete in our global world. As a Brown student, I want you to know how sad it makes me when teachers and administrators lecture us on equity and diversity. I have heard from one of my social studies teacher that George Washington was not such a great man. Other teachers have shared the idea that Abraham Lincoln freed the slaves for economic purposes rather than moral values. All of this disappoints me. I do not want to go to school that puts social justice ahead of my academic content. According to my mom, I need to get it together with my use of semicolons. My dad says I need to pay more attention to detail when solving geometry problems. I need to focus on the learning and not the ideology. Despite the fact that I have experienced incidents of racism, I do not believe that our country is systemically racist. I do not believe that a person's identity should be defined by skin color. I do not believe, as the author Ibram X. Kendi tweeted, "That white people who adopted children from other races are doing so because they want props to show the world that they are white saviors." I can tell you that I was not born in my adopted mother's stomach. I was born in her heart. I would argue that Kendi's comments are racist. Yet, this book Stamped was taught at this great new title for high school students to understand race. All of this is politically motivated, and it seems wrong. I know that you have said that we don't have CRT in our curriculum, but you know that what teachers are doing this, and it has to stop. I also heard on the news that National Teachers Union is trying to make this a part of students' learning. What makes me angry as a teenager is that this group is spreading the idea that people who are against CRT are against diversity in education. That is total baloney, and you know it. My parents want me to read diverse authors and understand the impact of racism. True diversity means looking at all sides, and CRT only represents one political perspective on the world from the lens of oppression. As a high schooler, I object to CRT on my own accord. I will stand up against this in any class where it is being taught. I do not want to sit in a room and write about all the times I have endured or participated in racism. Instead, I want to learn solid reading, writing, math, and speaking skills so I can solve problems and have a positive impact on the world. I want my teachers to teach their subjects, not their political values. Please be honest with our students and parents in our community. Please don't let me down. When I graduate, I hope to live a life where I know that my hard work, values, and merit matter. I am more than the Equity and Inclusion Team wants me to believe that I am. I am not just an oppressed blip on the district's 3.9% radar. I do not want to be admitted to college or offered a job to meet a quota. I want to rise and shine by doing my best. I am Ryan Rugieri, a Latino student, a son, a brother, and an American. I deserve more than CRT, and I hope you will consider this as we begin our next school year. Thank you.
Demetrius.
Oh, I'm sorry. Put the mic up. Did you say tilt it up? Dustin's coming.
Five-five. All right, there we go. Five-five.
Thank you. It's all right, keep going.
Might be the battery.
You're on my. This is not gonna penalize him in time. It's why we have extra batteries. Employee of the year, right there. Thank you, Dustin.
Demetrius Stan-
There you go. Oh, Dustin. You have such a projected voice.
And can I just say, it's just like home. We need a young person to come help us with technology to fix it, right? Thank you for your efforts, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Just a moment, Mr. Stanley. I appreciate your patience. I hear something.
One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you.
All right. Demetrius Stanley, five-five-three-two, Edinvale Lane. Is that good?
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Hello. My name is Demetrius Stanley. I am here on behalf of my biracial daughter and my concern about the direction education is headed in this school district. Do you, in your good conscience, think that any theory that needs an enemy, whether it's based on class or race, to accomplish a goal is going to end peacefully? In order to understand critical race theory, you have to understand the origin of critical theory into education. In 1884, the Fabian Socialist Society was founded in England with the aim of bringing about a socialist society by means of intellectual debate. The publication of books, pamphlets, and the permeation of socialist ideas into universities, the press, government institutions, political parties, and now K through 12. This was in marked contrast of the other means of bringing about socialism, which was adopted by Marxist parties, namely the use of violence and revolution to overthrow capitalism. The Fabian Society used tactics of infiltration, gradualism, attrition, and delay rather than direct military confrontation to defeat the enemy. Thus, one might describe the tactics of Fabian Society as intellectual guerrilla warfare against free market societies. The social reconstructions theory worked out in the USA, put forward as a basis of argument in schools and teachers as planned agents of social and cultural reform by addressing and solving practical social problems. The most famous of this society's early members included playwright George Bernard Shaw. He was a eugenics. I'm gonna tell you a quote from his. "The only fundamental and possible socialism is the socialization of the selective breeding of humans." So you think that someone that believes in eugenics is going to give us something that's going to bring us together and make society better? That's hard for me to believe that you believe that. Critical theory, which critical race theory stemmed from, was developed by Frankfurt School in Germany in 1930s. It applied Marxist principles to power, oppression, and emancipation in gender studies, religion, and other areas of sociology and culture. The Frankfurt School perspective of critical investigation, open-ended and self-critical, is based upon Freudian, Marxist, and Hegelian premises of idealist philosophy. Critical race theory applies Marxist critical theory ideology to race relations. Critical theory was exiled from Germany because of its teachings and was then absorbed by Columbia University in New York in the mid-1900s. Its teaching, or its philosophical roots are postmodernism, relativism, and critical legal studies. Since its inception in the 1970s, critical race theory thinking has grown in influence both outside and increasingly inside churches. One of the well-known books, a part of Critical Program, Critical Theory, Race Theory Program, is called How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. The quote says, "The only remedy for racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." How to be an Anti-Racist, page 19. Critical theory is all over the world. This isn't a new concept. The problem with critical theory is known as critical race theory in the US is, one, most people don't know its origins, and, two, it finds the weak spot of a nation, it pokes at it until society breaks down. Its natural design is to create conflict. How do you suppose calling a Caucasian person racist just because of their skin color is going to help people understand how not to be racist? Any theory that needs an enemy to accomplish a goal will never end peacefully. The generalization of groups of people is wrong and detrimental to the well-being of any society. Yes, we need to change some things in this country, but teaching a child political agendas and your political beliefs is not the reason I send my child to school. Don't get me wrong. Critical race theory has some great points, but the delivery will be the downfall. I find it hard to believe that people of your stature do not understand the history of this movement. It is a small part of a larger economic war, capitalist versus socialist here in America and around the world. It is your responsibility as leaders to truly understand what we are facing and the position you are putting our children in. We are depending on you to put all of our children's best interests in mind. I feel these teachings are disregarding my child altogether. My child is biracial, and these teachings will confuse her. I do not believe it is your job to teach this lesson. And for me, my child comes home and sees a Caucasian woman and myself getting along in love, beautiful home, eat everyday food on the table, clothes on our back, and then you're going to confuse her and tell her that my wife is the enemy and that I'm oppressed. That's not true. That's not true.
My name's Maureen Bodis, 4737 Sibel Court, and I would actually like to give Demetrius the time to be able to finish what he was speaking about his daughter and their experience, if that's possible.
And here's, I'm not for anyone, I'm not against anyone. I understand that racism does exist. I understand that people that look like me have had some issues throughout our history as a country and as a nation, but I am not going to blame any of you in this audience. I don't want you to feel guilty for anything that has ever been done. That is not your place. Now, we can fix, we can fix a lot of things, but the problem is, is you don't want to destroy the good and the bad at the same time. Now, with critical race theory as I understand it, it is judging me by the color of my skin. Now, when it's favorably and someone judges me by the color of my skin, that's good. But when the time comes and it's unfavorable and someone judges you by the color of your skin, you're gonna call them a racist. So the issue will continue. And you have to understand, this is a much, much bigger fight, and I'm gonna go on a tangent, and most of you probably have no idea. This is a much bigger fight, and you teachers, school board members, educators, you are on the front line of this fight. It's deeper than you think, and it's here. You've seen it. They're tearing down statues. They're talking about judging someone by the color of their skin. The Fabian Society doesn't believe in violent revolution. They believe in infiltration. And I brought, and now this is how critical theory got into education. I brought this with me today to show you, this is a wolf in sheep's clothing. This was the Fabian Society's first seal, their first logo of their group. They've changed it, but this was it. And these are the people that introduced critical race theory into, or critical theory into education, which hence, critical race theory's foundation. I think there's a lot of good points, but I'm gonna tell you, the delivery is where it's gonna fall apart. I can be for talking about racism, but I can't be for you demonizing my wife and telling my child that because of my wife, who's the kindest, one of the best human beings in life, you're gonna tell her, my child, who's five, that her mother is the enemy because of her skin color. I don't subscribe to that. And then you're gonna tell her that she can't be successful unless Caucasian people change. I don't believe that either. And I think the fact that they're gonna pay hundreds of millions of dollars to do diversity training here in Olin Tangi, while young men that look like me are killing each other at a historic rate. Why? I truly believe it's because of the message that people look like me are constantly giving. You're always telling them, oh, the world hates you because of your skin color. How do you expect success from that? That's hopelessness. And you wonder why they're in the street doing the things they're doing because you can't get outside of the community and see different. I came from an all, a community of everybody that looked like me from Belgrade, Florida. I came to Ohio, it changed. It looks like a lot of you. My grandmother told me, leave Caucasian people alone because they are the devil. That's how I grew up. But fortunately, I was able to get outside my community and see differently. And I hope through all this, that we take it away from your skin, the color of your skin, and if you do, do the critical legal theory, right? Because you're making it about the law. Yes, some laws are very discriminatory. Critical race theory is making about black and white, and black and white are not racist. Those aren't real things. Those are political racism. Those are political constructs. Those are titles. Those are literally, those are classifications and statuses that was created in the late 1600 by slave owners to separate us because we were coming together to revolt against slavery, against the elitists. And it ended up creating the Virginia Slave Code of 1705. And they said, let's give these indentured servants a little bit more. Let's create some laws to separate them from people that look like me.
Mr. Stanley, that's.
And you're selling that every time you call yourself black or white. We're never gonna change things truly, if that's what you're teaching.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Peterson, 4723 Normandy. I would like to give my time to Mr. Stanley as well.
And I know you're probably sick of me now. I can see the faces right here in the front row. They're tired of listening to me. No, and at the end of the day, we do have a race issue, absolutely. I've dealt with it. Everybody in here that looks like me has dealt with it, but we can't indict an entire society for that. Because the people in here, the people that live next door to me or next door to you never wrote a law that discriminated against you, ever and ever. And so what we need to do, what we need to do is come together and go and change what's happening in Washington. Because we're bringing politics into our school. My child is five years old. All she should be thinking about is Barbie dolls and going to the pool with my wife and wrestling with her daddy. And I'm being told that you're gonna send, I'm gonna send my child to school and she's gonna be taught about the color of her skin. And critical race theory, from what I'm understanding, it doesn't deal with people like my child who is mixed. It is black and white. So you completely discount my child, and I take offense to that. But at the end of the day, I don't want violence. I don't want revolution. I want change, and I want us all to change together. That's the only way we're gonna do it. And as far as the school board, and I know you guys are in this, and I guarantee you feel some intimidation to implement this, you feel the energy that is given towards this. I'm a big study of, study of history and communism and socialism and capitalism. I'm just gonna tell you right now, this is a bigger fight. None of you really understand it, but I'm gonna tell you, if you are born of Western culture and you have Western culture, cultural ideas, communism and socialism- You will either be sent to a reeducation camp, or other things other than that will happen. That's history, that is flat out history. You can go to the Soviet Russia, you could go to Communist China, you can study Marxism, you can study Ingles, you can study the Fabian Society. They do it in different ways, but at the end of the day, with what's happening, they're using my people to implement socialist ideas. And to change a capitalist society, because if you look, you listen to Mr. Derrick Bell, the godfather of, of critical race theory, he mentions capitalism often. And for me, understanding critical theory, this is a bigger fight, folks. And I don't think people on the board, I don't know if you understand that, I don't know if you know what you're facing and what we're facing as a society. You haven't been hearing the term democratic socialist for no reason for the last five years. There's a reason you've been hearing that. There's a reason why our, our economy creates poverty. There's a reason why our education has been taken over for political purposes. Indoctrination, and that's the first step. So I hope, the things that I said here is open your eyes about real, the real history of where critical race theory, the foundation of it comes from. It is built for conflict. You can't create something by having to have an enemy to make it end well. I love my community, I love everybody in it, and I don't love you because of the color of your skin, I love you because you're good people, and you want the best for your child just like I do. So thank you guys very much, but I want you to leave here today understanding, this is way bigger than education. And I hate that they use my people to put this up, they've done it to us for decades, and we keep falling for it. I hate it. But that's what it is, that's how I see it, that comes from my study. And we keep voting for the same thing. Thank you, guys.
Susan Stedman, please.
Susanna Stedman, Royal Park Drive, Lewis Center. Just piggybacking off of him, my whole speech was about CRT, and you were talking earlier about alleviating barriers to learning and promoting a culture of inclusive excellence for everybody, and I think if you include CRT within that, you're not including all students, and you're not promoting that culture of inclusive excellence that you are talking about. My two boys at Olentangie Orange High School have experienced some of this. And so I really feel that the board really needs to think long and hard, even though the state Board of Ed is promoting it, and even the teachers' union, just think long and hard before you implement some of those policies, and think of all students and everybody. Thank you.
Audrey McHenry, please.
Hi, Audrey McHenry, Sierra Drive. I just wanted to take this public opportunity to share with you some great experiences that our district has gone through with the band. Dr. Cox from Orange High School and Mr. Reeves of Berlin continued to put students first. I have two children in the Orange Band, one of them being a senior. To say that it has been an amazing experience is an understatement. The first year, we were unsure what to expect, as my son insisted on doing cross-country, two activities that demand a lot of time, but both Coach Walters and Dr. Cox said, we can make it work, and they did. My son is entering his senior year and has enjoyed the best of both worlds. Talking about how great Coach Walters is will be saved for another day. But the community and family of the Marching Pioneers has been great. Working together in squads, sections, and as a whole band has taught patience, teamwork, and gratitude. Being a part of band with over, being a part of a band with over 200 members can, can't always be easy with different ages, genders, ethnicities, and personalities, but it always seems to work. And have you seen the Orange Band? They're good. Dr. Cox and his small armies of, small army of volunteers, one who is an essential part of it, is here tonight, Heather. They have created a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment. Athletes, musicians, performers, and other creative kids at Orange High School come together and make something great, week after week, and even all of the times in between. Dr. Cox's quiet, yet powerful leadership has maintained his, this band family even during the pandemic. In an email exchange I had with him, and thanking him for continuing to push for student performances and experiences, he said it was just as important for him to hear live music as it was for the students to be performing it. He's an incredible man. Now we are looking to start another band season, jam-packed as the band can get back on the road. I think that's the theme, right, Heather? Let's look to what is great in our district, let's look at what works and why. Look at all of those kids in the band, over 200 of them. They don't talk about any of this craziness. Hope we can see you at the Pioneer Field soon. Go band.
Mrs. Feazel, I believe we have time for one more this evening. Ms. Cross, I believe it's Stefanko, am I pronouncing that correctly? I apologize.
That's okay, my name is Kara Stefanko, address is 4575 Cascade Drive, Powell. I just wanna take a few minutes to talk quickly about some of the strategic planning that you're doing. When I was listening tonight, I was hearing all about how it's about putting the students first, it's about alleviating barriers to learning and creating a culture of inclusive excellence for students, staff, and community. What I've seen this last year in the classroom for my daughter, who attends Liberty, has not reflected these values. I see my daughter coming home, she comes home, she says, I don't feel comfortable stating my values in the classroom. I shut my mouth, I know that if I speak up, that I'll be ostracized and I'll be bullied. She is a conservative Christian, she loves people, is the brightest, most effervescent personality that you have ever met. Inclusive, loves to make friends. I used to actually call her my world friend maker. We had people of every color at every one of her birthday parties from the time that she was six. There is nobody that she wants to exclude, there is nobody that she would ever exclude. And yet, she doesn't feel comfortable speaking up in the Liberty School system because she knows that it is totally aimed at, an ideology which is based on a liberal philosophy which promotes the fact that you either support, you know, the Democrat ideals, which are highly pushed in the classroom, they're allowed to promote Democrat candidates, but they're not allowed to speak about Republican candidates, they are allowed to talk about how we should promote critical race theory and how we should apologize for our color, but we're not allowed to talk about how we're all created in God's image. And the year has been difficult and depressing. I'm hoping that as we move forward this, and with this, and we are starting to reveal some of what is going on in the classrooms, and we are starting to acknowledge that even though we might not call it critical race theory, that these ideals are being promoted in the classrooms and by teachers, that we can turn this around and we have a different experience next year. This is not what I want for my daughter, it's not what I want for my community, it's certainly not what I want for all of the people in this school system. When we divide each other by class, by race, by sexual orientation, we absolutely will end up divided. That is not the way to create unity, it is not the way to, it is not the way to create a, a bridge between people. It is absolutely meant to divide us and to keep us separated and to prevent us from healing. And I encourage you and I implore you to take a look at what is going on in our classrooms and to provide better oversight and to encourage our teachers to allow students of all thought processes to be allowed to share their ideals, because when we erase freedom of speech, we're gonna lose our country. When we erase discourse and don't allow people to actually voice what they say, we don't have protection of freedom of speech for love speech. We have protection of freedom of speech so that everything can be out there and that we can have discussion and the best ideas win. Please allow our kids to learn how to have discourse and how to learn how to deal with each other and how to come together in unity.
Mr. O'Brien?
My name is Ashley Wise, and I will be very respectful of, I realize the last person, that was the last person to speak, but I must say...
Well, no, I have a question for the last speaker.
Okay.
You are asking a clarifying question?
A clarifying question.
Okay.
Which class, which teacher, and did you raise your concerns to the principal?
That's not information I will share publicly.
My point is, if we don't have specifics, we can't take action.
We will. We actually have lots of examples. They don't matter. We can look for...
Yep, thank you.
Yes, I know, okay. I don't know, it's Mrs. Wise. Okay. Just a moment, please. Yes, okay. We have, we will, yes. And I've already turned something over, Mr., in, we've already turned something over, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that for, for privacy purposes, to protect the student. So, yep. Okay, thank you. Moving on with tonight's agenda...
Mrs. Feazel.
We, I, we understand.
I understand.
I understand.
I, I respect that, and I, I will not share what I had prepared today, but I just wanna say, congratulations to all the students, to the staff, to the community members who received awards on this evening, and I'm thankful that the majority of them are not in this room to witness the shenanigans that have happened on this evening. It's unfortunate, from the moment we stepped into the room...
Thank you.
It doesn't bother me.
We want...
I'm so glad that the students do not get to see how you all are acting as adults.
I don't want this discourse to happen.
Thank you, yes, I was on the list, and I signed up appropriately, unlike some others. Thank you.
We do not want discor, listen, we do not want discourse to happen, please. You know what, we're not turning this into a performance outrage, okay? Yeah, we don't want to turn this into a meeting that ends up because you are recording it right now and it goes out everywhere, okay? This is a board meeting, we need to conduct the business of the board. We are now under discussion items, and we have discussion item number A, and Todd Meyer, you are presenting it to us.
I'm here to discuss the retire, rehire of Jane McCray. And this is a statutory requirement and timeline that we follow. As you know, you accepted Mrs. McCray's retirement in the spring. In order for us to move forward with the retire, rehire, we had to send out media notice back in June, and then have a board discussion item tonight, July 8th, which we then will bring back in August, the recommendation to rehire Jane McCray as a school nurse for Olentangie Schools. And what that does, and you ask every year, we have currently, we have four retire, rehire certified teachers, this will be our fifth. And the advantage for the district is obviously we get somebody with her tenure, experience, and knowledge in nursing. And per the contract, we bring retire, rehire back from, her current step would be 33, we bring them back at step five, and they stay at step five as long as they're employed in the retire, rehire contract. So with that, the savings incurred for the district would be a little over $44,000. So we plan to bring back recommendation to rehire her at the August 12th meeting.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Now I need to entertain a motion to go into executive session to, a motion to go into executive session, and I didn't permit, I don't have the, it's in accordance to Section 121.22, I used to have a number, 21, oh, yes, thank you. Sorry about that. A motion to go into executive session due to Section 121.22 G1 of the Ohio Revice Code to consider the employment of public employees. We are going to return, it's not gonna be a long executive session, but we have to get briefed on a matter that we have to vote on later, and we can only do that in executive session. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second. Yep. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel? Yes, and it should only be, what? Thank you. 10 minutes, 5 minutes?
15.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that long, we'll be right back.
And we will be voting.
Yes, and we will be voting when we return, on the matter at hand. Okay, so now we are in, board action item. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the board action item A, consider administrative recommendation regarding the employment of Jennifer Peters Ryan. Do I have a motion?
Some of, a second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Thank you. I have to switch gears here. Okay, now we are on...
Treasure action.
Do we have any treasure action?
You have one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, no, I pulled all my papers apart.
Yeah.
I was taking notes. Okay, treasure action item. Mrs. Hatfield, what do you have for us tonight?
Yes, please, God bless you. I would like to ask for treasure action item A, for your approval, please.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent Action Items presented by Todd Meyer, please.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items 12A through D for approval.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent Action Items presented by Todd Meyer, please.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items 12A through D for approval.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, any further discussion? Call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, now I need a motion to go into another executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 G1 of the Ohio Revice Code to consider the employment of public employees. And after we come back this time, there will be no voting, because there will be nothing to vote on. Except adjournment. We have a motion to go back into executive session, please.
Some of.
Second.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we will... Adjourn, please. Is the motion?
Second.
All right. So, Dr. Wise? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right. So Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wagner Feesal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, thanks, guys.